God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Gordon Hillary.
I knew Charlie was on. All right. So gonna start with this. As Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the town of New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom conferencing software for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number 929-205-6099. Meeting ID number is 869-075-36632. We're using the link provided with the agenda. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email BOSSsecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So without any further ado, gonna turn it over right over to Trish McCarthy with our weekly update. Trish, if you would.
Yes, thank you. So I consolidated our last six days for lots of reasons. Number one, we've got this storm and hopefully we can get this done before we all lose power. So that being said, they did remind us on our call today that it's 102 days that the EOCs around the United States, around New Hampshire and the state EOCs have been open every day since the event started for our cases. Although I have to tell you, I heard the five o'clock news and I didn't have a pen with me. It almost sounded like I had heard some different figures, so I can only give you what I got today, unfortunately. So total cases in New Hampshire is 5,00932. That's up 130 cases since last Wednesday when we spoke. Our totally recovered are 4,758, and that's up, which is a good thing, 267 since last Wednesday. Unfortunately, deaths are at 384, and that's up 11 since last Wednesday. We have 790 current cases in New Hampshire. We had 577 that have been hospitalized, which is only 10% of our total cases, or actually under 10%. And currently, we only have 10 in the hospital. Those are unbelievable numbers. They complimented us on numbers. Military support, still working on missions and disbursements, as well as assisting and demobilizing the alternate care sites, ordering PPEs municipalities for September and November elections, and I'll give you a little bit more information on that towards the end. I don't know if you can hear my phone beeping, but it is. I'm sorry. Okay, good. All right, logistics. They're working on PPE deliveries for schools in anticipation of what's gonna happen in September, and also the Secretary of State for the elections. And I did talk to Mary Jo to make sure she was up to date on this, and she already knew. She actually gave me some input that I didn't know about. The Joint Information Command Center said our social media trends, a lot about COVID conversations surrounding a potential second wave that's happening elsewhere, but New Hampshire is still looking good with numbers remaining low. Lots of talk of reopening, as well as talk of defective equipment that had been delivered to nursing homes. A lot of aggravation about that, obviously. And the other Joint Information Command talk on social media is President Trump rally in Portsmouth on this Saturday. We're basically in good shape for our numbers. So we went, they gave us some updates for the EOC things we needed to know, and then they went into questions. So some of the questions, one of the people, I wanna say it was him, said, "How about congregating meals in town hall where some of the seniors like to have their meals delivered and socialize?" And they wanted to know, could they do that? And they responded, the AG's office reminded, "There are no restrictions on gathering." So yes, they can, although if you're serving food, they wanted them to look at the restaurant guidelines. Primex says, "Yeah, sure, deliver the meals." And although restrictions have been limited, because we can now gather in meetings and in outdoor and indoor, just remember the social distancing, if you can't keep six feet away from each other. There was also, whoa, my goodness, listen to that thunder, somebody who said they had a positive person in town, resident in town on July 5, and he was seen about town and not wearing masks, and lives with a daughter and a girlfriend, and they seemed to be just going around, not paying attention, and not wearing masks, and they are showing symptoms. And they wanted to know their recourse and how to handle this. And actually Larry, Bob Leverone, Chief Jewitt, Chief Alcadino, had this happen to us in town, I wanna say probably a couple of weeks ago, Larry, right, where they had to deal with a very similar thing. And they said, "There is a, right, there is a flowchart, but first violations of people that don't wanna quarantine, and if it continues, they will be issued with an isolation order in there. It could get pretty extensive as to punitive damages." And they were going to include more information on that. Tonight we get a situation report, and unfortunately, it's not, we don't get that till about seven, so I can't share their comments on that right now, but I'll keep you posted. There was also a local EMD, not us by the way, who talked about a pizza place, and they weren't wearing masks, and they wanted to know the guidelines for the employees. Again, we've got some similar situations in town that it could apply to, which is why I'm sharing it. And they reminded us that cooks don't have to wear masks if they don't have direct customer contact. Employees, however, who are in contact with customers, need to wear their masks. They gave us a business hotline number. If we see there's businesses that are in violation of this, I don't know if anyone wants it, it's 603-271-1225, and that's the AG's business violation number. And then the town clerk message about elections. So the Secretary of State reached out to distribute PPEs, and it's all gonna be going to the EMDs. There you go, Larry. They've ordered for 234 towns in the state, the amount of quantity PPEs that each community will be getting for both September and November elections. The Secretary of State will be distributing it to the Homeland Security, which is then gonna go to EMDs. And they said they'll get in touch with Larry and the appropriate EMDs to develop a plan and to tell him what size vehicle he should come with in order to pick up everything for distribution. And they're hoping it will, the distribution plan will be in effect and hope everyone will have what they need by August 8. Mary Jo added to that, 'cause I called her to let her know about this, and she said, "Oh yeah, they ordered also absentee ballots." I think she said she ordered 6,000 absentee ballots, because the Secretary of State is saying that if people want to do an absentee ballot, they're gonna treat COVID as if it is a disability, so people can actually use an absentee ballot. That being said, she had no idea how many to order, so she ordered what we have, the amount of residents we have in town, and then three different pieces of mail have to go out with an absentee ballot, so she picked 6,000. Who knows what we'll get. They also ordered trays for the ballots to go on. Nobody's supposed to touch the trays. I guess then the trays, I don't know if they get thrown away, and pencils for everyone to use. So that's even more than Larry and I knew about. And then there was a question on extended occupancy for daycare. The question was, "When will it expire?" Or "Will it?" And their answer was, "There is not yet a date, but it is going to be addressed in Phase 2 of the New Hampshire reopening." And then they talked about, and the AG's office came on right towards the end of the call and said, referencing that pizza incident that the, I forget what time it was, wanted to know how they handle that. They said violations of quarantine, they can call this number 931-0144. That's violations of quarantine once they've been warned, and that's probably something that Larry, Chief Jewitt, and Chief Alcadino probably have those numbers. And that's my quick update for that.
Thank you. Some good stuff there. I'm thinking kinda out loud here. As we all know, the elections are run, not by the Board of Selectmen, but they're run by the town clerk and the town moderator. And what we should think about doing is, our first kind of COVID election will be September 8 for the state primary. So we oughta target, I don't know, like, the first Wednesday in August. We should make sure, and this sounds like an action for Diane, as they all tend to be, we should make sure that the town clerk and moderator attend the Wednesday COVID meeting, the first one in August, 'cause I think we should start talking about if we need, it's gonna be different. You know, just like I said, thinking out loud, I'm glad the state allows people to just claim COVID-19 to get an absentee ballot, 'cause I gotta tell you, if I didn't have to quote-unquote "work" that day as a selectman, that's what I'd be doing. And then if people do feel as though they want to come in and vote, I think we should attempt to have the least amount of volunteers as we can possibly get away with. As I think we're all aware, we have a lot of people, most of them retired, who always stand up and help us out on elections, but maybe we should tell them, "Thank you, but maybe, you know, only do half the day" or whatever. So something to think about as we get closer to that. But that, to me, that'll be coming up sooner rather than later. And the other thing I took away from that is, the numbers continue to be great for the folks here in New Hampshire, and especially in Newton. So let's keep it up with what we're doing. So anything else about what Trish just talked about before we segue to the task force? Anybody?
I just have a question. I know it's been in the news a lot about, you know, now the study's proving airborne transmission in small enclosed spaces, which, I mean, it sounds to me like on your meetings, they're already aware of that. I'm just curious.
Yep. And they are saying that the best thing that you can do is be outside, and that if you are inside, if you cannot practice the social distancing, then obviously wear a mask. But as much as possible, they're saying be outside. The fresh air is better for you.
I'm just very concerned about the voting coming up, so we'll keep an eye on that.
Yes.
All right. Did we wanna segue to the task force kind of report, the reopen task force?
Sure, I'm ready if you are.
I think so. If you've got it, Trish, go ahead.
I do. So here's our update. We did speak yesterday, and it was just kind of reiterating where we stand right now. So tomorrow morning at 8:30, I'm gonna be meeting the glass guy in the town hall. He's installing the plexiglass in town hall. I do not believe he's doing the library tomorrow, but he already called to confirm that I'm gonna meet him there and let him in. Mary Jo already knows. What I'm going to do is bring the ELC computer with me. Hopefully, I can figure out how to get online, and I'm just gonna work in the hallway while he's there doing his thing. And then Diane is going to be meeting the fire safety people on Friday, and they'll do what they have to do. And then Nancy is going to make sure that Tony on the weekend is going to be doing the cleaning, because that was the whole plan of doing everything kind of a couple of days in a row. At the same time, we talked about while Tony's there on the weekend, that if he could fix the billboard out front, it's almost, it's almost done, but we need to add, and I think Nancy knows this, but I'm gonna repeat it, I don't know if she's on the phone, but I'll send this to her. It's gotta say "By appointment only," and then underneath that, it's gonna say 382-4405, and our website. Then we have the brochures that I am printing out. I have two brochure boxes, but in our meeting yesterday, we decided to order three more. Diane suggested one for the front door, which makes sense, and then we need two for the library. So just to give you a heads up, I know Kate, you like to keep track of what it's costing us, so the ones I'm donating obviously are free, and then the other three are gonna be $16.30 apiece. And then we talked about how to install them, and Jim has some heavy-duty magnets that we're thinking we will attach them to the back of my brochure boxes, and then we can stick them, use the magnets on the metal doors. So now we don't have to make holes in the building, or even worse, in the vinyl siding. Then the same guidelines are gonna be in the brochure box, and then the screening questions that Mary Jo is asking people when they call to make appointments. And she knows, you know, we talked about how keep a log, Matt, if you remember, we talked about that last Wednesday night. She thinks that's great. She's already got the appointments. She's gonna ask the questions. And then on the outside of the doors is gonna be a laminated reprint of the screening questions, and it's gonna say, "You answered these questions when you made your appointment. If any of these questions have changed to a yes, please go home and call to reschedule." So that, Mary Jo loves the fact that they're gonna be reminded outside and not to come in and say, "Oh yeah, I've got, you know, one of the answers is now yes." She wants them to go home and call her. So she was fine with that. So that will go also. I'm gonna go to, Larry said I can go to Staples and get that laminated, so we can put that on each door and get that covered by COVID. Then the guidelines were sent to the newspaper last week, because the Board of Selectmen voted on them, and unfortunately, there was a glitch, and Alicia, who was on, who was supposed to be there, somehow was getting ready for vacation, and even though I submitted it first thing Thursday morning, I got today's paper and it's not in. They did call me yesterday to let me know that it probably wasn't gonna be in, and asked me to resubmit. And then I got the whole thing about how they can only print eight pages, and blah, 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 blah. So unfortunately, it didn't make today, this week's paper, but it will be in next week's paper. And then the last thing, so that's it for the task force. Let me make sure that I cover all my bullets. Blah, blah, blah. Yes. So the last, oh, and the fire department, Chief Alcadino said that once the fire and safety people are in on Friday, then the fire department will have to come in to inspect. So he is aware that this is happening this week. And then the last thing that Larry thought it would be great, 'cause we've been obviously working on the grants, and so we have roughly, so the next grant has to go in on July 15, the next Gopher Grant, so that's cycle two, and roughly, we're about $29,230 for that one. And then the FEMA grant that we have already started working on, so we're working two at a time right now, this isn't finalized, 'cause we don't have an end date yet, but so far, that's $18,223, which so far, between the two Gopher cycles and the FEMA that's not over yet, that's $77,380, plus the $50,000 worth of PPEs that Larry has been able to get through the EOCs. So we're doing good money-wise.
Yeah, that's great news. I think, I said it last week, I think the fact that the guidelines hadn't made the paper in time, I don't think that's a big deal. I think that just kind of, you know, helps us do a softer opening, right? So, but I will, this is dangerous here, but I'm gonna speak for Mary Jo right now, and Cheryl, and Kim, and everybody who's in there. If you, if you make your appointment and you're healthy, and then a couple of days go by and your appointment's coming up, and you feel sick, any sort of sick, and you feel like you're gonna inconvenience them by rescheduling, you're not. So if you're sick, reschedule. Don't feel as though, I think I might be speaking for every dentist and every doctor in New Hampshire with that, but, you know, Trish just said it right there. You make the appointment, you feel sick, don't come in, reschedule. Even if you don't think it's anything related to COVID-19, if you've got any sort of sickness, you're doing them a favor by rescheduling, so.
Right. And Mary Jo did say during the appointment conversation, the phone call, she is gonna remind them of just that, that they're gonna be asked these questions again outside the door, including, "Do you have a temperature?" And again, any of those things, don't even open the door, don't ring the bell, just leave.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Matt. I just realized, there's one more thing I forgot, but go ahead.
No, I was finished. Go ahead, please.
So I'm looking at my notes, I, you know, it's a blonde senior moment, I needed to flip the page. There was one more thing that the task force talked about, and we've talked about, and I can't remember if we've actually talked about it with the selectmen or just in our task force meeting. Nancy had talked about the potential of putting kind of like stanchions with, we talked about the plastic chain link that you can get actually at like Home Depot, and using our, actually, I don't know if it was Kim or Mary Jo that suggested it, using the support stands that we bought for the sanitizers, that some of them aren't being used, and Mary Jo said they're pretty heavy, and we thought about being able to put them coming, say, from Nancy's doorway, all the way across to like the wall, Kim's wall at the end, to try to keep people that are coming in on Mary Jo's side, and so that these stanchions would keep people out of Nancy's office, the kitchen, and obviously Kim's office. And it sounded like a great idea, like I think Nancy said, "We probably don't have to worry right now, 'cause right now they're just coming in for Mary Jo," but it's something that we probably will do and see how it looks, if the Board of Selectmen thinks it's okay.
You know, the other thing I was thinking is the velvet ropes we have upstairs for Election Day. I don't know if that could be repurposed. We only use them on Election Day.
Yep. We talked about that. The only thing is, the supports that hold them are so big and bulky, we're afraid that they might take up too much room, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Yeah, but I think, I think in the board can weigh in here. I think we agree in concept, right? There should be something to kinda guide people and keep them away. Everybody on the board okay with that?
I have no objection.
Yeah. So I don't think it'll be an extreme cost at all. So whatever you guys think looks all right, does the job.
There'll be footprints on the floor too, Matt, so they'll know where to stand.
Right. Yep, Larry said that once the town hall is cleaned on the weekend, that Monday or Tuesday, I forget what day he said, we'll be going over putting down the footprints where they need to go.
Cool. So hopefully that all comes together, and then Monday's the day, and we'll see how that goes. And as we, everybody who's gonna be a part of this, please share any feedback during this meeting, when we have it again next Wednesday and the Wednesday after, and we'll decide what to do next, but all sounds good to me.
Matt, one correction, we're starting the appointments on Tuesday, not Monday.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Matt?
For me. Diane?
Just a quick one. On the guidelines, when should I post those on the town webpage, website?
I don't know. I think anytime is fine. What's the board wanna do?
ASAP.
Yeah, I agree. We want them up there, so people are aware of them before the doors actually open.
Agreed.
With clarity or not.
Yeah, it does say on the top of the guidelines, "As of July 13," so the date is there anyway.
Good. Yep, there you go.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the task force?
That's it for me.
Thank you. That was good. And I wanted to mention, I just thought of it a minute ago, but I didn't bring it up. We should put some little snippet on our town website about all these successful grants, just so everybody's aware in town, that, you know, we've essentially gone funded, not fully funded, we're hope to get fully funded, but, you know, a lot of people at home, a lot of taxpayers might be thinking, "What the heck are they gonna do about all this expense related to COVID-19?" We can tell them the story, so.
Right. I'm glad you said that, Matt. On one other note that I'll share, I'm sorry, and then I promise I won't talk anymore. The guidelines that went into the newspaper, I should probably tell you, since I used the Board of Selectmen's name in vain, that it starts out, the guidelines start out with, "The Board of Selectmen in Newton have approved a soft opening starting on July 13, 2020. The employees in the town of Newton would like to thank the residents during these difficult times. The Selectmen have formed a reopening task force that has been working on the opening and have created guidelines for access to town buildings. Obviously, the focus is health and safety of the residents as well as the staff. The Phase 1 of this opening will be as follows," and then it goes into the guidelines.
Great. Works for me.
Me too.
I like it.
All right. So it wasn't in vain. All right, so that was, according to the agenda, that was it for COVID-19, unless somebody has something else before we switch to manifest. No? All right. How about, anybody wanna do the manifest?
I have all six of them ready, so if you want, I can make the motions.
Sounds good to me.
All right. "I move to sign vendor manifest dated July 7, 2020 in the amount of $34,586.67."
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Let's do a roll call. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So unanimous.
"I move to sign police detail revolving fund manifest dated July 7, 2020 in the amount of $13,010.31."
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Let's do a roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. That's unanimous. Go ahead, Lisa.
"I move to sign cable revolving fund manifest dated July 7, 2020 in the amount of $4,656.0."
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. That's unanimous. Lisa, go ahead.
"I move to sign emergency management revolving fund manifest dated July 7, 2020 in the amount of $565.17."
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
"I move to sign inspector fee revolving fund manifest dated July 7, 2020 in the amount of $9,799.96."
Second.
It's good to have inspector fees. Let's do a roll call. Larry?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
All right, the last one. "I move to sign payroll manifest for pay period June 21 through July 4, 2020 with a pay date of July 9, 2020."
Second.
Second. We're gonna give that to Larry just for fun, 'cause Charlie.
Oh.
I have it all. I'm hurt.
I'm hurt.
All right, roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. So that's it for the manifest. Thank you, Lisa. Um, we have minutes to approve, and what's the date on those minutes, Diane?
We have non-public and public minutes dated June thirtieth.
Anybody want this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the selectmen's non-public and public meetings dated June thirty, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa, discussion. Okay, roll call. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
No, I haven't viewed them.
Okay, Kate?
Aye.
Uh, Lisa?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so four to one.
Can I make a suggestion that Charlie abstain? That to me would be more appropriate than saying nay. Just a thought.
It's up to him, his vote.
I'm just, I'm saying.
Okay, so we have four in favor, one abstain. Um, all right.
The next one is public minutes July first.
Okay.
"I'll make a motion to accept the selectmen's public meetings dated July first, twenty twenty, as written."
Second.
Seconded by Charlie, gonna do a roll call. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. Uh, that's unanimous. Uh, all right, anything else for this meeting?
That's all I have on the agenda at this time. I don't know if there, don't know if there's anything else from anybody else.
Any non-agenda items? My wife's texting me if you can't hear it, so this is a good, good, um, so I'm gonna move to adjourn at six thirty-two.
Second.
Everybody's in favor, um, as we all know. So everybody have a good night, good week. I'm not around, but I'm at New Hampshire, but-